Okay, it's 5 o'clock, so I will call the Education Operations Committee of the Whole to order. First up is, I seek a motion to approve the January 25, 2016 Education Operations Committee of the Whole minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have first and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Going to go out of order just a bit on the agenda and move to the Engage Commercial Real Estate and Agent to Market Property Agenda item. And Board members, you'll find that on page 78 of Board Book. Bobby, go ahead and when you're ready then.
Thank you for shuffling the agenda around a little bit. This agenda item fits under the category, "We'd like to let you know if we're up to it." I don't know if this requires Board action or committee action. For us to just seek out a commercial real estate agent, but once you hear in the community that we're doing such a thing, we certainly want you to make a decision on it. I'd feel more comfortable if I got Board authorization in order to do this. We have a couple of properties that, I don't know, for lack of a better word, maybe we'll call them excess properties, where it might serve our interests better to liquidate the property, have cash in our hands that we could purchase something else with. One of them is pretty obvious, it's the A.C. Kiefer Center. When we close the A.C. Kiefer Center and redistribute our 4K students elsewhere in the district, what are we going to do with the A.C. Kiefer Center itself? If it's a worthless asset to us, which is very debatable, we could save $190,000 that we have budgeted. We didn't spend it yet, but at least we budgeted $190,000 through our referendum. We could save that. It was a worthless asset, we could just give it away. We don't think it's worthless, we think it's got some value. We'd like to engage a commercial real estate agent to tell us the opportunity that exists. Perhaps give us a ballpark figure of what it's worth and maybe list it at that amount and see what the market bears. For argument's sake, if we can get $200,000 for the A.C. Kiefer Center, we'd be comparing a $200,000 liability to a $200,000 asset. That'd be a pretty big swing, especially considering referendum spending could occasionally go over. We wouldn't be restricted to use it for referendum. It's not tied to the referendum if you get revenue from that source, it would be unrestricted. We certainly have enough need. So I split it up into two separate motions. One of them is to engage a commercial real estate agent to help us understand the opportunities that exist and perhaps selling A.C. Kiefer. The other one is a property of land you may not even know about. It's a property of land we call a lot of things, let's just call it the Happy Hollow Road parcel. It's in the town of Cronenwether, Redder, Cronenwether. It's across the river from our existing school forest, but it's about a half hour commute to get there. And I don't know if Jerry Maney's here tonight. Jerry Maney has been working in the school forest for how long, Jerry?
Seventeen years.
Seventeen years, and how often have you been on that parcel of land?
Twice.
Twice. So I think it's pretty safe to say unless students wandered onto that parcel of land, they didn't go onto that parcel accompanied by anybody from the district very often. So it's questionable what the value of that parcel of land is. Jerry was also in front of you last summer talking about a really nice plan to perhaps build a lodge at our existing school forest. And we would have to decide eventually, if we could market this piece of real estate and have a buyer, would it be worth it for us to have, just picking a number, $200,000 tied up in a parcel of land on the wrong side of the river versus $200,000 towards our lodge at the existing school forest? And again, it's something, we don't have to make a decision on tonight. Obviously, that decision would be in front of the Board. We no longer have to wait for our annual meeting to bring that decision forth. We can sell land with a simple Board action, which would certainly come to you if it ever got to that. But right now, I'd like your permission, and I do have some things in Board Book with where that land is located, in case you're curious. That Cedar Creek Mall, and that's where Highway 51 kind of does that jog, and Business 51 goes to the west side, right down here between, and if the man Happy Hollow, maybe Ringzabel, maybe Red Fish Fry, Happy Hollow Bar. And here's a blown up version of it. The district owned chunk is rather irregular. How many acres Larry?
63.03.
63.03 acres.
Is this the land that the Watts Paper wanted several years ago?
Nobody ever officially wanted it on my watch here, that could be true though.
No, it's not. That was a piece of land that actually enjoyed Normal School Forest. This is not the same piece they were interested in.
How did we get this land? Was this a donated parcel?
It actually was, yeah, deeded to the school district in 1963. It was owned by the Wisconsin Technical Institute at that time, which later on became NTC. They no longer wanted to own it, so they transferred ownership to the district. But in the records that I have, it states that the title is held by the city of Wausau. And I've actually not laid eyes on the title, so we'll have to do a title search and an investigation about, you know, what parameters would have to be followed if it's something we can sell, if it's totally our ownership and so forth. We'd have to research that. But I guess to get to that point, we want to know how much is it worth? And from my perspective, if you look in the lower right-hand corner of the area that Bob has shaded off there, that's a railroad right of way that goes through there. So that might make it worth more money for a business if they wanted to have access to a railway. The, kind of the top and left part of it is actually quite a high hill. So I did talk to one business owner that was interested, but the hill kind of eliminated what they wanted. And his suggestion to me was maybe subdivide it into two parcels, one which would be residential up on the hill, and one that would be zoned commercial down along the railroad. But, you know, that's all down the road. I guess first we just have to find out what the deed says on it, whether or not we could sell it, and what it might be worth.
Bob, I had a question for you on how do we choose a Realtor? Do we have a process where we interview a few and then make a decision? Or do you have a list?
We could find a list pretty easily. I would probably do a search as if I wanted to buy commercial real estate, because the people I encounter through doing that search would be who we would be best served by, correct? I'd do a search, if I were to buy a chunk of commercial real estate, who would I encounter? And all the typical suspects would come up and maybe a couple more. You're purchasing intellectual property and their ability to market and their ability to not only give it an LS listed, but also something that was wanted, right? But it would be an interview. I would like for the Board to give us the authority to do that, develop a vetting process and through interview, and maybe an initial RFP to gather some general information, how many properties you sell, how many properties you list, simple information like that. Larry, myself, definitely maybe the interview panel. And if anybody has any idea, send me some folks to do the initial vetting, you know, if you have some idea of who sells commercial real estate that I may not have on my list, I'd be willing to look at anyone.
Well, I was just hoping that we'd interview a few people. That way it gives more than one person an opportunity to come in and talk and choose.
Yeah, I think we'll interview, we'll interview any qualified candidates, if it's three or four or five. Is the land producing any revenue? Do we log it or is it just sending back?
We did log it probably a dozen years ago. There was some large white pine on there, and there was actually some wind damage associated with a storm at that time. Since then, we have not. And that would be something that I think we'd have to do our due diligence and see what the timber would be worth if we were to log it, and then what that would do to the real estate value. Are we better off to log it, sell the logs and then sell it? Or does it increase the value of the property to leave it wooded and sell it as is?
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Again, tonight we wouldn't be making any final decisions other than just to tell administration to go forward and look into this and hire a Realtor. Okay. I think we can do it combined together since no one seems to have a problem with one piece of property versus the other. So I will combine it together and seek a motion to recommend to the full Board of Education that administration engage a commercial real estate agent to market the Happy Hollow Road property as well as the A.C. Kiefer Center property.
So moved.
Okay, we have first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So that will go to the full Board then. And next, we will move to the Wausau East Hockey Co-op proposal.
We don't sit here.
No, we can stand.
Can you sit up there?
We can. We can stand.
You can have a seat right here. We got a long duty.
We can stand. We can just sit right there.
Good evening. My name's Brad Peck. I'm the principal at Wausau East High School. Joining me is Greg Harvey, Activities Director at East High, along with our head hockey coach, Mike Holtman, and we have other very strong supporting hockey parents in the audience with us this evening. As we reflect upon the past season, you received information, we are concerned as the administrators of the school of the declining enrollment we have and the impact that that has on our varsity hockey program. Our hockey program is extremely important to our school. It's a program that we want to keep, we want to maintain the vitality because it provides students an excellent co-curricular opportunity to learn all kinds of life lessons. So I want to make it very, very clear that our, you know, our speaking to you this evening, our intent is to maintain and keep a hockey program at Wausau East High School. However, we cannot ignore the numbers. And you've received the information to take a look at total student population. Next year, we're going to be at 1,021, and the year after that, we're going to be under 1,000. When I assume the principalship, we were almost 1,400 students at East High School. So both east and west, the numbers, the numbers have gone down as you, as you know, as Board members. What we're here for this evening is just to more or less receive your permission to move forward. And let me explain that. There are a couple options that we have, we feel as administrators and as a head hockey coach. We can do nothing and just go forward with the numbers that we have. It's a small team, but it's a team with a lot of heart and a lot of spirit, okay? And we're very proud of our young men that are playing hockey and going up against teams that have a lot more players. But as we look into the future, we're concerned because how many players are coming up. So we can remain the same, do nothing, just proceed with the following season, or we can begin to explore the possibility of a co-op. A co-op, we don't know what school, but to co-op for a couple of years to maintain the vibrance of our program. What we need from you is permission to proceed to be able to engage the parents next Wednesday night in a meeting and discuss this as a viable option, because you've also received the application form, oh, maybe you didn't receive that. That comes from the WIAA. And basically, it states in there that the approval of involved Boards of Education or governing body are necessary for co-ops. Also, for winter sports, there's a deadline of April 1st. So this evening, we're seeking your permission to move forward to be able to explore a co-op with our parents, with possible other schools, because if this is something that we want to seriously consider and move forward, we would have to bring it to the March School Board meeting for your action.
What's the, what's the process, assuming that we recommend it tonight and it gets approved in March? How do you go about trying to find a school to join with? And what's, does WIA have the final say then on whether it's allowed?
Yeah, if you grant us permission tonight to pursue it, between now and the March meeting, we'll be actively looking at what the options might be, what schools that might be. April 1st, we just simply file an application with the, with the WIAA. Inherent to that is, or is part of that is approval by your own conference to allow the, the co-op to happen. We have that agreement already from our conference AEs, and that'll work with the principals. The principals will need to discuss it. So those sorts of checks have to take place between now and the March meeting. If we get to the March meeting and we have nobody to play ball with, so to speak, then then it's not an option. But because we have our system, we have to meet tonight, get your approval, come back in March, get final approval, and then submit by April 1st to the WIAA.
There's been no decision made as of yet. But in order for us to proceed and seriously discuss this, you as a Board of Education need to be informed, because if we come to March, after we've met with parents, after we've met with another school, Boards of Education from both schools would have to approve and have it submitted by the April 1st deadline.
And you're meeting with the other parent, the parents this week, Wednesday?
Not this week Wednesday, the following Wednesday.
What's your plan? They oppose it. I'm just curious. Do you stop there or do you?
Well, you know, we discussed this informally last year, but one of the things is, in order for us to move forward, we have to have support of our program. We have to, I mean, we don't have many players, we don't have many parents, you know, so we're going to have to move forward with their support.
Any other questions? Okay.
If I could just make one more.
Well, what if you say something now that we, changes our mind?
Well, no.
It's going the right way.
I always run the risk of that, but just, just one more comment, and I just really want to emphasize the fact that with our declining enrollment and the number of sports that we have, this is just symptomatic of great kids, great coach, great parents, that just the numbers aren't there. And so we need to talk to our parents, we need to talk to our coaches, have a very formal discussion about this on what are our options. And we'd like to go to the parents next Wednesday and say, "Look, here are some options that we need to discuss."
Well, I've heard, and other Board members have probably heard as well, people describing it along the lines of, "What are you going to do to save the hockey program, not just, you know, improve it, but just, because you literally have one within the next several years?" So I don't think this comes as a great surprise to any of us that you're exploring it.
It's difficult with two high schools in the same community, because we want to provide that opportunity and have that opportunity for students and parents on the east side.
Any questions? Okay, then, I seek a motion to recommend to the full Board of Education approval of a Wausau East Hockey Co-op for the 2016-17, 2017-18 school years.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have first and a second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, so that will go then to the March Board meeting, and you will update us at that time.
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for going out of order. Okay, then, let's move back to going through our agenda in order with the elementary school and 4K tenants boundary recommendations. And while folks are getting set up, just to sort of describe what'll happen here, even though this is a committee meeting and it's a less formal process, when we have agenda items like this that might create lots of discussion, I'm going to take it in a more of a formal role and have the presentation be given to us and completed before Board members ask questions. I'm afraid if we start asking questions in the middle of the presentation, we won't have to get the whole presentation. So after we get the full presentation, then I'll just kind of go in order with everybody. I'll start, and I'm sure many of you have questions, I do, and probably we'll have some more as we listen to the presentation. And then I'll go down the line and ask people questions, and it's not like we can't go around the table a few times, but let's hold the questions until the presentation is completed. While they're continuing to get set up, I know that we have some of the boundary study team members here, which nobody likes to stand up in front of a group of people. I won't make you introduce yourselves, but can you please just stand so we can see some of the boundary team members? Just want to thank you for all the time that you put into this, it's really appreciated, and thank you for coming tonight as well. And, you know, you may receive a question from us, you never know, so thank you for being here.
Okay, I think we're ready to get going. Sorry for the delay, but we'll get right into it. My name is Ken Jaworski. I'm the facilitator for Martinson &amp; Isling. This has been quite the process in terms of all the options that are available for boundary adjustment. What I'd like to do tonight is, since we have a lot of people here who haven't really been part, you know, of the process over the last six weeks or so, give you a summary of how we got here tonight, what's being proposed, and how the decision process to get to this point worked. First of all, the drivers for the study, back in April 2015, you had a referendum for the construction of four elementary school additions. You were closing A.C. Kiefer Early Learning Center, and the construction included four new regional learning academies at G.D. Jones, Hawthorne Hills, Riverview, and Thomas Jefferson. Additional K5 classroom spaces were also added at two elementary schools, J.D. Jones and Thomas Jefferson. So there were some decisions made that obviously we're going to have an impact on how attendance boundaries would need to change, because you need to align the attendance boundaries with the capacities of the schools. So that, just by the fact that you made these improvements, you know, there is a need then to make the adjustments. They contracted with our firm, Martinson &amp; Isling, for the purpose of recommending new attendance boundaries for the 13 elementary schools and the 4K early childhood learning academies at those locations. As you can imagine, there's been some inconsistencies too that has resulted in some of the schools being above or near capacity and other schools being below capacity. So not only did you have an opportunity here because of the improvements, but you also had an opportunity to make some adjustments during this process so that you could more equitably distribute students to all of your elementary schools and also the learning academies as they will be changing locations. So we had schools over capacity, including Franklin, Grant, Satine, Jefferson were the elementary schools, and of course, we had J.D. Jones, Lincoln, and Maine that were nearing capacity. Several of the elementary schools are Sage schools, and enrollments there are capped in grades K3 to 18 students at each of the classrooms. The Sage schools are Franklin, G.D. Jones, Grand Hawthorne Hills, Lincoln, and Thomas Jefferson. And the Board of Education Operations Committee said that it would be both financially and educationally beneficial to maintain Sage. So this became part of the process that we had to deal with as we moved through the study process. The general process that we followed for this study includes the following. First of all, for us to set attendance boundaries, we need to know the capacity of the schools based on the additions, okay? And there's, you know, obviously Sage has something to do with that, and of course, just where particular improvements were made. When we do that, we set the study capacities for each school. And basically, when you do this type of process, and we've done for many, except that industry standards of about a 90% flexibility factor was used for this study, and I'll explain a little bit more of that later. We also looked at school district projections, and we also looked at growth projections, community growth projections. There's some areas in the Wausau school district that we anticipate to see developed residentially more than others, and we certainly want to make sure that in those schools, there's some reserved capacity, because you don't want to be changing these boundaries, probably the, you know, the most frequent you would do it is every five years, but most communities try to prolong that as much as possible. So in order to do that, you have to have your eye on the moving target, which is where is growth potentially going to occur in some of these elementary schools. We utilize the most recent Third Friday enrollment counts in 2015, and these counts are student locations that are set, and I'll talk a little bit more about how that process works with our tools. But basically, that was the data set in order to begin the analysis portion, based on the Third Friday counts. And just so that everyone's aware, that these counts change almost daily, okay? But we, you know, you've got to pin it down to a certain time, if Third Friday is understood as being a count that's recognized. Of course, we're looking whether or not there are any safety concerns, we're looking whether or not there's barriers, we're looking at a little bit of busing efficiencies, neighborhood chemistry, and a student mix, okay? And some of that's driven by free and reduced lunch and those types of things, I'll talk a little bit more about that. But there's a number of factors. Anytime you move a boundary, all these things change. And the Third Friday counts do have a lot of this individual information associated a lot of this individual information associated with it, and we're very protective of that information on the students so that we're only using the information that's essential to develop the boundaries, okay? And the other process that we wanted to do was we wanted to work with a working group, and in this case, it was a boundary study committee, a committee that Kathleen had put together, I'll talk a little bit more about the chemistry there, but certainly we wanted to make sure as we're coming up with options that we could bounce these options off of the committee, that they could give us some input and we'd move forward in that fashion. I mentioned the accepted standard, the flexibility factor here, and basically what that means is attendance boundary would be set to accommodate 90% of the school's estimated capacity. You always want a little buffer in there because there are so many factors that change, and you need to go into this process with some flexibility built in. Key contributors. I was blessed to work with the Longfellow Administration Team and the principals. They sat in at the meetings with the boundary study committee, but the administration team also was available if Bridgette and I had questions or we had come to a particular point in the process where we need some more detailed guidance, they were there to provide that for us. And we were, we're probably in the thousands of the emails that we've exchanged and a number of different ideas, but they were very much available, and they also provided the service where as we developed options, we would run analytics on these boundaries. And it was this group that would look at them to make sure that we were in tune with balance of students within these boundaries. So it was very, very important, and a very important function, and it proved to be very beneficial. Then we had the boundary study team itself, okay? And was formed to review and the guide to proposed elementary school attendance boundaries developed by us, the consultants, and the administrative team. The composition of boundary study team consisted of two parents or guardians from each respective school, two community members, specialists, as well as principals, administrators who work in resource capacity only. So they were there to answer questions or help facilitate as we moved through the meetings to get to this particular place. We also had some community resources. Dave Mack, who's sitting in the audience row there, Marathon County Planning Director, and Brad Lenz from the city were both very important resources for us because I met with them several times just to talk about what areas of the district they saw growing more than others, and that became important because we needed, again, to acknowledge that some of the schools may need a little bit more reserved capacity because we anticipate some single-family development and those types of things. They were also important in seeing some of the demographic changes that are occurring, not just in the Wausau School District, but the state and pretty much the nation in itself. And that is the fact that we're beginning to see more multi-family development, younger families, and more apartment living environments, person per household size shrinking in certain areas, so we had to figure that into this particular process as well because there are some plans and then, you know, the big riverfront developments and so forth that have some pretty aggressive plans for apartment-type developments, and also you do have still some vacant lots sitting in some of your rural areas like Satine and so forth that, you know, if the economy changes a little bit more, maybe get the pop a little bit in terms of new family development. So their resources were important. Terms of tools. We use a tool called Five Maps that the, that the school district had already contracted with. It's a, it's a program, an analytics program that was downloaded with the Third Friday data from the school district, and I'll explain a little bit more. Basically, the student data is tied to PIN locations, okay, on addresses on a Google map, and allows the operator, and that would be Bridgette, okay, to draw polygons within the district, and it generates various levels of data based on queries, okay? So all the data that the Third Friday counts had, okay, once the polygons were graphed in the Five Maps program, those analytics could be run, and then I could take those analytics and pass them on to the administrative team, for them to take a look at to see whether or not, you know, we were compromising something or going in a direction that maybe you didn't want to go. But a very powerful tool, very strong in the analytics component, and it took a little while to get a few of the glitches out in terms of the understanding of the program, but it worked, it worked very well. Then we took this data and we used what's called GIS, a geographic information system. This particular system has more detailed information on where rows are located, those types of things. When we present the maps, you're going to find far more detail once we take the Five Maps data and transfer it to a GIS system that allows us to generate the maps and to get, I think, a better sense of where the attendance boundaries would be. We had a number of assumptions and directives to establish 13 elementary schools in an effort to make the transitions between 4K and elementary schools more seamless. That was one of the major directives, okay? What we did want to do was when we set the elementary schools and we set the 4K boundaries, that we didn't want someone in the 4K to have to jump schools when they go to elementary schools. So for that to occur, we had to look at the elementary schools first, and there were a number of directors there. First of all, all student addresses were going to be signed to one of the 13 elementary schools, that kind of goes without saying. We were going to look at historic patterns for Blue Form students and open enrollment out of district. Blue Form would be, for lack of a better term here, would be for students that are in one school attendance boundary that want to go to another. So say someone's in Maine and, and they want to transfer in the, in the Maine boundary area, but they want to transfer to Satine, they would have to go through this process, okay, through the school to make that, to make that jump. And we wanted to take a look at that. We wanted to see what schools were losing kids through the Blue Form process and which schools were bringing them in because that would have an impact. One thing that I'll tell you right away on this process as we get into it is this is a ripple effect, okay? This is like throwing a stone in a pond. When it hits, everybody gets impacted in some way, shape, or form, for the most part. Sometimes you can do some small tweaks where you're only affecting one school, but for the most part, if you're moving some kids out of one attendance boundary, it's going to come at the expense of something else. So this is very yin yang and, and something that we always have to keep our eye on. Again, we were told to use the 90% flexibility factor to allow for some disparities, or not disparities, but just some flexibility within how they administer maybe their Blue Forms or open enrollment, okay? Open enrollment being, since I didn't give you that term, would be kids coming from outside districts to Wausau, like a D.C. Everest or somebody that wanted to come in to Wausau, that's an open enrollment, they come in, and of course, when they come in, they're taking a chair, they're taking a desk, they're taking a location at that school, so we wanted to take a look at that. Community growth plans, I mentioned this earlier, I'm not going to spend much time. When I met with Dave and Brad, they gave me a lot of data, a lot of good direction on where that would occur, and of course, more detailed analytics will be accomplished for preferred options. Adjustments may be made based on the administrative team's review of the analytics. Okay, here we've got the, the elementary schools. All students, excuse me, this is the 4K, there we go, for, for the 4K locations. All student addresses within Scotts, Wausau School District will be assigned to one of the 4K schools. No attendance boundaries for the outreach sites would be projected. That would be impossible to basically do, and we know there's a big factor here in terms of the impacts of the outreach sites on 4K. So we couldn't set boundaries for the outreach sites. What we had to do was basically make this assumption that we were going to equally distribute to the 4K sites and that these outreach sites would accommodate the overflow, but it was impossible, impossible for us to determine which outreach site would take more than the other. So we had to do a little bit of a leap of faith here to figure out how that was going to work, but what we did want to sacrifice was the seamless nature of going in up to the elementary schools. Again, we use the 90% figure in order to set the capacities and that the organizational system here would, would administer any overflows over those capacities. Included both morning and afternoon classes. We understand that 4K students will drive next year's attendance boundaries, so we're looking at this year's 4K data and, and we're using that to project next year, but that's the best data set we have in order to do it, and, and I think it's probably going to be fairly close from that standpoint. And basically, it's assumption that all Jefferson students at the rehab Jefferson School for accommodate 4K would go to the Jefferson School, and basically, number five here is what we're trying to do is we're trying to keep the students as aligned to an elementary school as possible. Six, future Blue Form students and open enrollment students are assumed to be equally distributed between the 4K sites because we have no historic evidence to determine that otherwise. So after time goes on, after a year or two, and maybe the district starts seeing some trends, maybe there'll be a reason down the road to make some tweaks to that particular boundary, but at this point, we don't have that data set, so we're assuming that it's kind of equally distributed amongst the four sites. So they will play a role and they will take on the overflow or the capacity of students for those four. I was strongly considering boundary alignments with elementary schools, which is what I talked about. Okay, now we're getting into how we, how we built this particular process and the options themselves. Boundary study team was put together, we met January 18th. That particular meeting was like them drinking out of a fire hose, I think. We had a lot of information for them, a lot of stuff to digest, but they were very, very game about it, had some good feedback after that. We talked about the key terms, the assumptions that I just laid out to you. We talked about how the analytical tool works, so they had an understanding of that. We talked a little bit about the previous reports and the growth areas and those types of things, and the factors that would be at play here in setting the boundaries. We went forward at that particular time to move the process forward, we did create options one, two, and three for them to at least look at and get some sense of how this whole system is going to work. And of course, there were a lot of questions and so forth, and one of the questions that came up was regarding the growing Montessori program and whether or not there should be an option that addressed the fact that, you know, maybe over time, we're looking at about 140 kids that could be going into that program, how would that factor into a location? As Montessori's wishes to be better aligned at maybe an elementary school instead of a middle school, so you had things like equipment could be shared, and you didn't have bathroom issues and stuff like that, and so that was a message, and basically, what came out of that was the directive through a meeting that occurred between the leaders of the Montessori program and the administration team to sit down and take a look at an option. So they did get an option, it was option four, and that looked at South Mountain handling the Montessori program. At the February 3rd meeting, we came back, reviewed what had happened since the last meeting with the particular options, and then we reviewed attendance boundary options for elementary schools, the pros and cons, concerns, and queries for options one, two, three, four, and five. We had breakout sessions for discussion, okay? What we did was we broke the room up for all these options, broke the teams up, they rolled around to each particular station, they wrote down comments of what they liked about that option, maybe what they didn't like about it, what they'd like to see improved, so there was a lot of discussion. Each of the groups had a facilitator, either a principal or someone from the team here that could answer their questions. And after that particular round robin of discussion, we ranked existing options through a voting process that John here had led, which was very, very interesting and very reactive and instantaneous too, which was, was really nice to see, and direction on the option alterations and development of new options. And basically, at that voting, options two and five were the two selected options that would move forward with alterations, okay? They, they suggested a few things, those things seemed to make sense, so we developed some hybrid options out of that. Here is a result of that voting that occurred that night. Option one, and I'll go through these a little bit more detail later, is really the status quo, what you have right now, so. And this, this particular graph shows they were asked to give each of the options a rating, they voted from one to five, one being the best, and this is how it came out. And as you can see, option five received the most best votes, option four, which was Montessori option, had, had the most and the least category, and basically, out of this two and five came forward, we asked another question, which of the options would they want discarded, and we see that option three and four were the two options that the boundary study team felt should be removed at this time. Then at the February 15th meeting, we had our update, we presented the remaining options for the elementary schools, the concerns that were had, we presented options for the new early childhood learning academies, the 4K, we ranked the options, and we had a decision on the options for the, for the board and kind of where we are tonight in this particular process of which one came out of that boundary study committee meeting as the, as the lead candidate. And here, here are the votes. Two became 2A, which was a hybrid option, and as you can see, we had 26% that supported this option. We had three levels, I can support this option, I can live with this option, or I can't support this option. I can't being orange, red being I can live with it, and blue being I can support this option. So that's how the voting went for 2A. 5A, as you can see, received a lot more support, 62.2%, and we have 21.1 that said I can live with it, and 15.8, I can't support this option. Now, it doesn't mean that there were not comments about 5A, because there were, and the thought here was if we can take an option that you like already and make it even better, we will do that. So there were comments that were, that were developed for that, which became 5B, which is the option that you see behind me, which is the option that the committee is, is looking at here tonight. Okay, just a discussion of the options. I just want to give you just a brief synopsis of what happened to the option and why and so forth. We had eight options that were developed through this process, one, two, 2A, three, four, five, 5A, and 5B. Let me tell you a little bit about the difference between the two, the two, three, and four option and all the five options. A little bit different methodology between the first three and the five options, okay? And here is the main difference. In two, three, and four, those options, we looked at the inbounds and the outbounds of each of those proposed attendance areas, meaning that we were trying to take that level of preference and factor it into the capacity percentages, okay? Under the five option, we said, wait a minute, if we didn't know where the boundaries were, okay, how would the boundaries look as long as we can meet the capacity numbers and we use some of these other factors? So five was called the clean slate option, I'll talk a little bit more about that, but basically, it's different because when we set a boundary for five, we counted all the students within that, took a factor for those that would be coming in, open enrollments, because we knew that we were not going to say no to open enrollments, that they were going to come in, and that we had a little preference record there, and also, we knew where the Montessori kids were, so if there were some that were heavy in one school when we set the boundary, we had to kind of remove those numbers because they really opened up available capacity for some other students on, on the fringes. So that's the difference between the two, three, and four and the five options, okay? Option one was the current state, it's basically what you have now, it was not supported. We're here for a reason, there's, you'd be totally out of, out of whack in terms of your equitability, and you wouldn't be addressing the questions of the improvements that you made at your schools. However, the baseline attendance information was used throughout this However, the baseline attendance information was used throughout this process because I'm sure everyone was going to want to know, what changed? Okay? If you're going with 2A, how's that different than what we currently have? So we always had that in the calculations as a base to compare, okay? Option two was one of the two originals, and it was to limit attendance boundary movement. And that's another thing about the two and the three. We tried to meet the requirements, the capacity requirements with moving the boundaries as little as possible, okay? We tried to see if we could just tweak it so that we're meeting the capacities, but we didn't look too much more beyond that. We checked a few safety things, road crossings, those types of things, but for the most part, we were trying to minimize movement, yet still move it so that we were meeting the capacity numbers and meeting the objectives of the overall study. As I mentioned, option two did have support at the February 3rd meeting to move on to 2A, and that evolved out of these comments. And we attempted there to reserve capacities for schools, expanding, but then we anticipated growth to occur in, such as Satine and Maine, okay? Under two, we were still over that 90%, and there was a little bit of a concern that we weren't proactive enough in granting the relief of attendance in those two schools. Ultimately, 2A fell short in this level of support at the February 15th meeting, I showed you that graph earlier, when compared to option 5A, the group liked 5A better. Option three was like two, it evolved the same way, it was one of the originals that Bridgette and I put together. It didn't pass through the first filter, which was a February 3rd meeting, and that was pretty much the end of option three at that particular time. I mentioned the Montessori option, that came out of comments at the 18th meeting. As I mentioned earlier, the hope was to align with one of the existing elementary schools, which would be a better fit for the students themselves. They met the representatives from the administrative team with Montessori folks, they agreed on 140 students would probably be the number there, and South Mountain was the school. But again, with the ripple effect, it moves things up the row. If South Mountain can only take a smaller amount because Montessori was there, that means the Joneses and the Ribs and all the way up the line, there had to be a push, they were going to have to take on more students. I guess unfortunately for the folks with the Montessori program, this one didn't make it out of the February 3rd vote, but we gave it a look, and I think the points were well taken in this process. You know, sometimes you go through this process, you've got to come down to a final vote, but sometimes you go through the process, you learn things along the way that you put in the back of your mind for future reference or future considerations. So I think I can say with confidence that there have been a lot of seeds planted as we've moved through this process, and hearing comments from principals or the BST or whatever, that we've documented these comments, we've documented this process. Some of these things may, they come back and they may be able to be approved upon at a later date, but for now, that was gone. Five, again, was a clean slate option. Here, Blue Form transitions was not in the mix. You set the boundary, you counted the pens, you took into consideration open enrollment in that boundary. What's Montessori students were leaving in that was basically set that number. We posted it up against the capacity issues, and that's how that ran. What we looked there in option five was to centralize neighborhoods better. This was the chance to get the schools aligned better with the neighborhoods that were out there, okay? And so we looked at that as a very strong component of the clean slate option. And of course, five ended up being 5A because we had some input. 5A improved the balance of students within each elementary school, accommodated growth areas better, and addressed some of the transportation challenges that were out there. We saw in option five that, you know, some of these kids might be taking an hour, 10-minute bus ride based on how it was all set up. So that was a legitimate concern. So how can we move a boundary so that we can minimize that as much as possible? So those are some of the tweaks that occurred from five to 5A. And again, the centralized neighborhood school idea was still paramount in maintaining the 5A option. And it won out against 2A at the February 15th meeting, but there were still some suggestions that the boundary study committee had on 5A. We can make 5A better, we can make 5A better. That was that we like it, but we can make it better. And so 5B evolved out of that, which again, was based on comments that talked about maybe improving busing, improving the capacity percentages was another one, and you'll see later on that those numbers balanced really, really well, and it moved into the creation of the 5B option. It incorporates the most recent changes in 5B, and with the changes impending endorsement of boundary study committee through online review, we believe that this stands as preferred elementary school attendance boundary option, and with that would be the 4K boundaries that would go with it. Now, I understand that that voting has been completed on that, and how did that shake out then?
It was fifteen could support the top level, and there were five at each of the other levels.
Okay, okay, so fairly consistent with what we saw at the previous meeting there, okay? So basically, the conclusion would be that 5B would move forward on this particular group to a board endorsement. We feel that it's an equitable distribution of students, approves the neighborhood alignments with each respective school, acknowledges the need for reserved capacities within the projected areas, and it also creates no issues with alignments for existing middle and high schools. So we've kind of kept that well intact as we've been building this. We've tried to make it seamless with the 4K into elementary and then not have a huge impact on the middle and high schools, which it doesn't. Now, I want to go a little bit into, now, this is some of the mapping work, the options here that you'll see. This is a map of your current situation right now, which was called option one, existing, and here is 5B. So if you kind of take a look, I go back and forth, you can see how these change. You get into a detailed scenario, you see these boundaries here, that's the old attendance boundaries, and then how, like this is Satine's boundary, so this purple area would be going to Maine, and you know, this particular area down here was Satine, would be going to JD, Jones, and here, Grant, for example, goes all the way to the river. Jefferson came down, so this was the old boundary right here, and you can see the adjustments. But again, trying to get that school more in the center locations and all these particular scenarios, and we looked at this in quite limited detail. This then would be the 4K or the pre-K options that would follow those lines, okay? So this is where those children would go, the green being Hawthorne Hills, the yellow being Jefferson, Jones being the orange, and Riverview being the blue. And here's a little bit more detail in terms of who's going to go what. So Jefferson would include the Jefferson Elementary, Maine, Satine, and Grant, okay? So those boundaries there make up who would go to Jefferson pre-K. Here, Jones pre-K, Jones, Lincoln, Rib Mountain, South Mountain, Riverview, Riverview, Hewitt, Texas, and Franklin would go to Riverview pre-K, and then Hawthorne Hills would be Hawthorne Hills and Marshall would constitute that. Now, I'll be the first to tell you that there's more capacity on the east side of the river than there is on the west side of the river when it comes to the pre-K. And so there's going to be a heavier dependence on the outreach sites on the west side than there will on the east. Now, we looked at busing kids across the river. Decision was made, but we think that's premature at this particular point because we don't have a lot of history on how this is going to work, and so instead of just making the decision to bus, there's going to be reliance more on the outreach sites here on the west side, and of course, they can balance to the east side as well based on a case-by-case So here we are with 5B, and I want to just show how this spreadsheet works. The yellow option here, option one, shows you what's currently, this red column right here shows you what the 90% capacity of these schools are. So this is the column where we're looking at setting that standard for which the boundary that we draft is going to be compared against. So this shows you what the 90% is, this shows you the total capacity, and you can see there's several of them here, like Jones, that's way over, Satine is over, you know, Grant is over, so we've got some that are already over these particular factors, so it's out of balance. These are the number of kids that are inside the boundary, these are the number of kids that are going outside of that school's boundary, these are the number of kids that are coming inside that elementary school's boundary. We have an open enrollment factor here brought in, the total attending, whether or not they're over or under that 90% capacity. So you can see, you know, here Satine is 50 over at that particular number. If you go the over/under capacity by percentages, you see Satine at 120, Maine at 100%, we've got Franklin here at 102. So some of these, there basically is very little room to accommodate growth. So what we did with this under 5B, and we did these calculations for all the options, I just want to make that clear. All these options were reviewed with boundary study team, they saw them and compared them. So in this particular case, 5B, and these are the number of students that are inside the new boundary, these are the number of students then that would be coming into that school based on open enrollment history. This is the Montessori factor, so those would actually be our seats available for that particular school. And then here would be the total attending based on the boundaries that you see here, and then you see the under capacities. And under 5B, we have all schools under the 90% capacity. So we've got reserve capacity in for each of these schools, okay? And then we have the related percentages, which come in pretty nice. We've got some here that are pretty tight, 98 at Satine, Lincoln at 98, and Jones at 97. But we also have some down here that aren't as tight, like Hewitt, Texas, and Rib and South are sitting in the low 90s. So a nice balance of capacity, something that's probably going to serve the district well. There's a lot of flexibility there to bring in open enrollment students, or even for that, even for the Blue Form process. I know that was one thing that was brought out with the boundary study team. He says, is this, just because if we vote for five, does that mean that Blue Form goes away? And the answer to that question is no, okay? Their policies might be a little different, I can't speak for the administrative team of how they're going to do that, but when you get this equitable distribution like you see here, where we're all sitting at, you know, under 100%, some with 10%, it puts the administrative team in a better position to be able to flex where students will go. So that's a big benefit in every now and then reviewing your attendance boundaries to allow for that flexibility. And certainly, there's no way myself or Bridgette or the admin team or anyone else is going to be able to look at a crystal ball and say, okay, now that you've changed these boundaries, we know that's going to trigger some parents that'll want to move their kid to maybe where they were before. We get that, we know that. But to be able to guess what that number is going to be would be impossible. That's going to be something that the administrative team is going to have to deal with as these requests come forth. Now, let me say this, having done this with four other districts, there's always a panic in terms of the fact that there's change. And there's no, I'm not going to sugarcoat it, there is change. You're going to have some students that were one school that are going to be going to But our experience with other districts, as much as it's looked upon as maybe a concern, it's also looked upon as an opportunity. Your child to meet a new teacher, your child to meet new friends, your child to meet new acquaintances, those types of things. There's no way you can go through this process without impacting, but the impact does not have to be all negative. And I know Kathleen has made it very clear to boundary study team that this group will take all efforts to make sure any transitions are handled in the most upfront and easy way possible. Students are going to a different school, to be allowed the opportunity to visit and see and those types of things. So all those things are in place. There's no way to do this without having that impact at least the first year. We get that. And we've also heard that if you're a student that's in fifth grade and you're in that school and you might be looking to move to a different school, you're like, boy, sure it'd be nice if they could finish out at that school, okay? And they've heard that comment too, and I think that's something where when they set their policies on the Blue Form process to move kids inbound/outbound, that that would probably be of higher preference than maybe a younger child in a lower grade. But, you know, they'll work that out. So that's what took about two months to get done in a very detailed, labor-intensive process. We always try to put ourselves in the position of the parents, we both have kids, we've been through this process ourselves, but we also realize that this school district has made investments in their facilities, and those facilities have changed capacities, and because of that, boundaries are going to have to change so that students are most equitably distributed, so that the school opportunities, the learning opportunities are as equitable as possible too. And that's pretty much where it stands. So at this point, I'll turn it over back to you and entertain any questions or take comments from the floor, however you want to do it.
Okay, so we'll kind of go around, I saw the same questions and concerns that I had coming into the meeting, so I'll start us off here and then we'll kind of go around and hear from everybody. The west side makes a little more sense to me than the east side, so I'll start with the west side. I do have some concerns. One is, one of the moves on the west side is moving the southern main boundary line from Highway U down to pretty much Satine Drive, and that's really more of a concern than a question because I know what the answer to the question is, the answer, the reason for it is to take some students away from Satine and add them to Maine where there's more room. But it's still a concern to me because the distance is pretty far, we're moving kids that are actually closer to Satine and moving them to Maine. And also, there's a neighborhood in that area there that is really connected to the Satine school. Received an email today from a parent mentioning how several of the PTO, a good chunk of the PTO actually lives in that area and now would not be at Satine anymore. So that's a concern, again, not really a question because I understand the reason why that was proposed, but just because I understand the reason for it doesn't mean I necessarily agree that alleviates my concern. A question that I have on the west side that doesn't make as much sense to me is there is a section that is to the west of Highway 31 that used to be Satine or currently is Satine, and would be proposed to be moved to Jones. And the reason for that would be to, again, alleviate Satine. But I don't understand why that would be proposed to move to Jones as opposed to propose to move to Rib Mountain, given that Jones is at, the Rib is at 91% and Jones is at 98% with this proposal. So it's confusing to me as to why we would move kids on the west side of So it's confusing to me as to why we would move kids on the west side of Highway 39 to Jones, which is more crowded than to Rib Mountain, which has more space. Why wouldn't we keep those kids on the west side of Highway 51 or 39, either at Rib Mountain or Stettin, rather than moving them to Jones, which is actually more crowded? And I'm not sure if there was a bus scene or a different issue that came into play there, but that one doesn't make as much sense to me.
Well, you're talking pretty much this area.
Yeah, I mean, I can look at that strange peninsula coming down from Jefferson in our current boundary line and say, "Okay, Jefferson is a little overcrowded. Here's some area that is basically right next to Grant School. It makes sense to change that to Grant School." But when I look at this...
This here.
Yeah, that makes... But when I look at this area right there, that you're highlighting there, it's confusing to me as to why we would move the kids on the west side of Highway 39 to Jones to put them at 98% as opposed to Rib Mountain, which is at 91%. I mean, it's connected to Rib Mountain.
You mean go this way?
Yeah, it's connected to Rib Mountain already. Either way, the students in that area would be going to a different school. So there is that transition concern. That wouldn't alleviate their concern about the transition. But it would be difficult for me to explain why they would be moved to a school that's going to be then put at 98% as opposed to move to a school that would be at 91%. It would be higher than 91% if they moved to that school, obviously. But that confuses me.
This... Let me just say, this area here has been... Has been discussed and rediscovered. Briga and I have always said that if you're going to make moves, you want to make it as much of a neighborhood as possible. You don't want to go street by street and that type of thing. You know, this area here, yeah, the reason it's not at Stettin is to give Stettin the relief that it needs. Could it go to Rib? I guess we talked a little bit about that from a busing standpoint. Was that an issue or not that area as much as far west of that?
Yeah.
Was a concern on the far west of Stettin was a concern in the main, but this was not... They're going to get bus to figure Jones.
Well, because, I mean, you speak in terms of a neighborhood and the Highway 39 there is a bit of a division. Nothing compared to the river that you learned goes through our city. But it's a bit of a division. And I'm not asking for a specific answer right now, but that one didn't make that much sense to me. My concern about Stettin, part of my thinking with Stettin that perhaps wasn't in the minds of those in the Boundary Study Team is we do have a wing that's going to be finished off at some point at Stettin. I'd really hate to move a boundary and then build an addition from Fund Balance in three years or something and then move a boundary again or even a referendum or some... I don't know. You know, we added two rooms on through Fund Balance a couple of years ago. That school is designed to expand there. So that might be part of what impacts my concerns about that Stettin move. If we... So while that just sits, let's talk about the east side. East side, the two things that jumped out at me on the east side, and I've been looking at these maps for the last three days, so I'm sorry if I can't go through it quickly. Looking at the east side, the two things that jumped out at me were the drastic increase in the Franklin free and reduced lunch percentage. That's huge. That's a big concern of mine. Another thing that jumped out at me is we've got one school, John Marshall, with this new proposal sitting at 98%. Well, we've got four that are in the 90 to 93%. And so I looked at the map and... And again, just like I mentioned that one over by Jefferson, part of it makes a lot of sense. You know, right now, in the current boundary configuration for John Marshall, it's just sort of weird section that goes up north along the river and kind of cuts into Hawthorne Hills and doesn't make a lot of sense, okay? So that makes sense to me that that would be changed and be part of Hawthorne Hills. But moving some of Hawthorne Hills to John Marshall doesn't really make sense to me, given that it puts John Marshall at 98% and leaves Hawthorne Hills at 91%. And then what happens is there's sort of a domino or snowball effect. Because if you don't move those Hawthorne, the southern Hawthorne Hills kids into Marshall, that means you then don't need to move the southern Franklin kids into Hawthorne to make up for the Hawthorne kids that left. And if you don't move the southern Hawthorne kids, or southern Franklin kids into Hawthorne, now you don't need to move the southern Riverview kids into Franklin to make up for the Franklin kids that left. That East Wassa Avenue kind of becomes a line straight across. I suspect that that chunk of students that is proposed to move from Riverview into Franklin also may have something to do with the drastic increase in the free and reduced lunch. I don't know the demographics quite as well as probably some other people in the room, but I would suspect that that is a reason for that. And keep going up the ladder. So now if you don't have so many Riverview kids moving down into Franklin, you no longer have to take kids from Hewitt, Texas to make up for the kids from Riverview that left. And so I've spent a couple hours on this every day for the last few days, which doesn't compare to the Boundary Study Team. And so I don't want this to sound disrespectful in any way. But that's my first take on it. That jumps out at me as we got one school that's 98 and several others that aren't. Now, maybe the answer is we received information that we need to have this extra capacity at this school, this school, and this school because we think there's a new development going in or something that I don't know of. But that move of 98% at Marshall as well as the increased free and reduced lunch to Franklin, that's a big concern to me. It would take some convincing for me to agree to something like that. I'm just not seeing it.
The move with Franklin, and we heard that Boundary Study Team as well. You know, you could probably go more back to where you were in option one or experience state to achieve that. Free and reduced lunch as it related to Franklin wasn't one of the initial directives. We'll try to center that a little bit better and then see how the numbers would shake out. If that is more of the goal, then yes, we'll have to change.
Well, I mean, if you look at it, an improvement, obviously, you know, the good news for Franklin is it improves from being at 102 and it drops down to 90. But at the cost of, well, John Marshall goes from 89 up to 98. You know, so I don't know if that's an improvement at one school. It's a bigger capacity problem at another school.
Well, the other thing about Franklin that you have to, you know, keep on the radar is the riverfront development and 300 apartment units that are going to be proposed as part of that. So that was one of the reasons to try to get Franklin down to 90.
Right, okay.
And I have no clue how that's going to impact the free and reduced lunches as those apartments get built and filled. So, you know, that was one of the big things that came out of our research as related to that area. And one might say, "Well, okay, how many kids could possibly come out of an apartment complex?" But we're talking 300 units, even if it's a third. And you've got some single parents that've got children. It could have an impact. The information I've sped to me was that development could happen relatively quick, within the next two to three years. So that was the reason for keeping that a little bit lower and maybe pushing, you know, the Marshalls a little bit higher. We didn't see as much growth potential in that area as we did of Franklin. So that was a reason.
Yeah, that makes sense. I don't think it's enough to convince me that I would want to act on that now as opposed to waiting to see whether that proves to be true. You know, the reduction of the Franklin students is certainly, you know, a net benefit for the school. But I don't know... I just don't know if it makes up for... I don't want to describe it that way. But I have a concern about just so drastically increasing the free and reduced lunch population. And when I look at, basically Riverview loses 9% and Franklin gains it all, it just makes me think more and more that it's that section that we'd be proposing taking away from Riverview and transferring to Franklin. So whether we start there, whether we... and work out as the ripple effect, as you mentioned, or whether we start at John Marshall and work up is more of the domino effect. Either way, it sort of throws the whole east side into whack for me. And I may be the only one who feels that way. So let's see what other board members... To those in the audience who don't know, we don't, as board members, have a chance to discuss this before tonight. So we haven't spoken to each other about this. It sounds like between each other, we're hearing this for the first time. It's because between each other, we're hearing this for the first time. We don't talk about it. So Beth, you got assigned to the end on the right, so let's start there. And let's kind of move down. And as I said before, it doesn't mean that we can't go back. We've been through this on the referendum process where we had more than a 5B, I think, by the time we got through our different... Yeah, we had all kinds of different options. So we've been through this. So let's start with you, Beth, and let me know what your thoughts are and questions you have.
So one question I have, maybe a little bit changed to this situation, but isn't there a real imbalance between the middle schools and the high schools? And we're not addressing that. And I guess I don't understand the reasoning for that. I mean, we're learning that athletic teams are small and stuff like that. Maybe I need to understand that a little bit better.
Well, it's really, I mean, it's two separate issues. If they do build a big apartment complex on the east side, that would be helpful for that problem. But it, you know, we do have an imbalance. We do have space issues at John Muir, for example, especially, that we're going to have to look at. But that doesn't really... It doesn't really prevent us from looking at the elementary boundaries now, I guess. And one of the things we without a doubt have to do is establish the boundaries for the 4K. Those kids are coming next year, so we've got to establish that. But yeah, we have concerns. We've got that river that goes down the middle of the town. But I asked, actually, when I was in the interview process when we were deciding who to hire as a consultant, and I asked Ken if he had any way that he could just shift that river over a little bit farther east. Sorry, a little bit farther west. But yeah, he said he couldn't do it, so...
So we're really just talking about the elementaries here?
Right now, yeah. I mean, you've got the new construction, you've got the 4K coming. So we kind of were pushed to... We've got to address it. We've got new space that we have to address, and we've got 4K kids we have to address. So we have to address that. We don't have the luxury of putting that law. It doesn't mean it has to be as drastic as this, in my opinion, but we do have to do something.
I'm still digesting. I don't have any other questions. I just... I know that the east side and the west side are not equal, and I wasn't sure. I mean, if we're going to change boundaries, maybe it's just too much to bite off that one.
Well, if you were to add changing secondary boundaries to it at the same time, it would be even bigger, that's for sure. And it presents really whole different issues.
You know, Lance, I share some of the same concerns you do, especially this section that was at Stettin, and why doesn't it go up to Rib? I think that makes sense. I also had a question, I think this is Jeff Lindell's question. When we were talking about student enrollments last year, weren't a couple of the areas that really had the biggest changes or drove some of those numbers? The apartments out towards Stettin and then the apartments out towards Jefferson. Isn't that where we see... I mean, it might start at one big number at the beginning of the year and drop significantly by mid-year for enrollment counts?
I don't know if I remember the exact conversation that you're referring to.
Well, we did have conversations about the fact that our schools that have high numbers of apartments within their boundaries have greater transitivity than single-family homes do. There's just more movement. So it's harder to pin down, like Ken mentioned before, this is the third Friday count and you can have 20% turnover in one class within one year.
You might end up at the same number count, but a lot of outs and a lot of ends.
That was part of the rationale for moving the Jefferson boundary up to capture those apartments up there, which are much closer to Jefferson than they are today. So some of that was...
Well, that's the part of the map that makes sense. When you move it up a little bit because it's closer to Jefferson and then you take away some of the Grant or take away some of the area from Jefferson that's right next to Grant School. It just, I don't know how the boundary developed in that fashion, but somehow it developed in a way that kids right next to Grant School are traveling up to Jefferson. So those parts of it make a lot of sense to me. There's just a few that I just can't get my mind around. Do you have anything else, Jeff, that you... Kathy, do you?
Oh, okay. Yeah, I was not a member of the Boundary Study Team. As a member of the board, I of course couldn't be, but I was dazed to it. And so I sit in on the meetings, and so I've seen these many times. I have to say, one thing is I was impressed with the unanimity with which the VST reached their conclusions. When I saw their votes coming in, not voting myself, I was really surprised at how much they agreed, particularly how much they agreed on option five, which meant erasing all current boundaries and really presenting to the public the idea that a lot of families would be moving. But again, as Ken suggested earlier, you want to move neighborhoods, not individual houses, not individual blocks. So that when the kids move, they're moving as a group with their friends. And that's an important consideration. As we look on the east side, the thing that concerns me most, it's not so far off from what Lance was saying earlier, but it's the 78% free and reduced lunch at Franklin School. And I know, Ken, that wasn't one of your charges. But we're at 78% in that school and we're only at 35% of a Riverview. And so one of the suggestions that I have that, you know, perhaps might deal with that is that little corner off of East Wassa Avenue, north of East Wassa Avenue. And so, Ken, sometime later, can you give us the numbers on how many of those kids and how many free and reduced lunch are in that corner?
You're talking about this area right?
Yeah.
That's the same...
Right to the left.
Yeah, it's the same... You're kind of on the same topic I was because I talked about how we kind of go up the map. If we're not having to transfer kids from Riverview to Franklin, then perhaps East Wassa Avenue can, you know, just go across there and...
It's one of the busiest streets. Of course, it becomes Highway 152 as it moves town, or well, it is all the way through, of course. So, you know, if we can find a way there and perhaps even dipping a little further south and then dipping Franklin further south into the old East High neighborhood, we might be able to reduce that free and reduced count and balance those a little bit better, meaning we could also put Hawthorne Hills a little further south into the areas that students previously came from. Again, meaning that we've got families who won't have to transition to marginal. And so there's a little bit of an extra capacity we can work with there, moving a couple of blocks here and there, essentially just trying to go with those three schools, south, south, south.
Well, what you're talking about doing then is you have to pin, you know, to make the corrections you're talking about.
Sure.
We'd have to start with Franklin.
On either side, north or south, sure.
Yeah, I mean, we would have to define that boundary first. And then from there, again, the ripple effect comes into play.
I suspect that little spot sticking up from Franklin there that is currently Riverview.
Right here?
That's Riverview right now.
Right.
Yes.
And I suspect that that little section there that is being given to Franklin, and the reason it's being given to Franklin is because Franklin gave kids to Hawthorne and Hawthorne gave kids to John Marshall, which gets me back to why I worked the opposite way up the map, that I didn't know why John Marshall was getting so many kids. But that little section right there that is transferring from Riverview to Franklin, I have a suspicion that that is driving part of the drastic increase in the free and reduced lunch at Franklin and the big decrease in the free and reduced lunch at Riverview.
Now, everyone who's in the audience can see these dark lines are where the existing... Now, everyone who's in the audience can see these dark lines are where the existing boundaries were for that school. So this was all Riverview, you know, on your current scenario. So, I mean, before we get too far along here, I mean, we're trying to center the school too and build a neighborhood around it as best we can, okay? But if the free and reduced lunch is going to drive it, then again, we would have to start with that school first and then build from there.
Yeah, I don't, for me, anyway, that's not the one single driving factor. It's just two things that jumped out at me when I looked at the numbers were the imbalance in terms of the percentage at John Marshall for actual student count, and then the imbalance of the free and reduced lunch. I mean, if this is something we're going to do, it should be something that's going to last for a long time, and if we're going to disrupt this many families, we better make sure that we are very confident we can't do it better. And with those two imbalances on the east side, I'm not currently confident that we can't do it better. I could be very wrong, but my first take on is I'm not confident that this is the best we can do.
Well, these are pretty easy and small tweaks, just moving those north-south boundaries on the east side of the road. So it's not an enormous headache to try to work out the numbers on that. And again, I think it's very valuable, and I think the BST did a great job in centering the schools. If one of our community values is these neighborhood schools, well, then they really ought to be neighborhood schools and not look like gerrymandered congressional districts. So I think it's very good to have in this compact, which I think option five does for us. There's other issues, but it does do that positively. Looking at the west side, that little odd peninsula that's attached to Jones in 5B, Ken, if you'll refresh my memory, I believe that's twenty-five students currently in that neighborhood. Okay, and we're looking at an undercapacity of twenty-three students at Mountain, so that would pull us right up to about ninety-nine percent at Mountain. I don't know if there's any specific value of those kids going to Mountain instead of going to Jones, but it reduces a little bit here and increases there. With that highway...
Well, can I just jump in there, Jeff, before we get too far on that? And you're going to push, you're going to push Riv right to the help, and there is still some area for growth in Riv.
Absolutely.
There's that in Jones.
That's a tough bear right there, going over that flyway. We talked about that many times. Once you go over, you're committing. And so, in respect to the president's comments here, yeah, if we're going to pull that in, I don't care if it's Jones or Riv or wherever it is, we better get it right, because we don't want to have to change that again. I'll be the first to tell you, it makes me a little uncomfortable there.
Yeah, I'm not advocating for sending those kids specifically to any given school, just saying that sending them to Riv instead of Jones doesn't change that much. And again, if we do that, then we're talking about maybe moving the South Mountain boundary up just a little bit, too.
There's a little bit of a barometer there on that finger.
Right, if we continue to look at Mountain and you look at the land north of the Riv River there, I was straddling 29, and those kids south of 29 are going to get busted in any case. Bob, you can correct me if that's incorrect, but I think if you're south of 29, even if you're going to Stettin, you're being busted, aren't you, because of the barrier?
South of 29 East?
South of 29 West. Oh, yeah, because we're talking about Mountain, so south of 29, yeah, so those kids will get busted either one way or the other. Stettin, I think everybody needs to remember, is our most highly subscribed school, one hundred and twenty percent capacity right now. That's going to chase, the families are going to leave Stettin. There's just no other way to do it, unless, Bob, you come up with a pile of money and you can build on to it.
I've got some money.
Your parents leaving Jones, taken?
Well, and again, you'd have to come up with that money now, right? In order for this, for something else to go into effect this time of fall. So I think Stettin parents have to understand, some are going to move it. I don't think there's much option, which is, I know, an unpopular and unfortunate thing.
Well, I would rather be in the same position as Stettin for the next year or two than improve it now with a boundary change and then build on to it and then move a boundary change again.
So can I summarize this? Because there's a lot of comments here going on, I just want to make sure I'm capturing them. So the thought here is this area right here, while we lane south, would go to Riv, okay?
Well, yeah, I brought up my concern that, you know, why are we moving kids from the west side of Highway 39 over to Jones and putting Jones at ninety-eight percent and we've got Riv at ninety-one percent? And Jeff pointed out that one of the reasons for that, because I wasn't in this meeting, in these meetings, so Jeff pointed out, one of the reasons for that is, well, then you put Riv at ninety-eight percent or so, and the thought was there is more room for population growth in the Riv area than in the Jones area.
True, and so if this would go to Riv, then this peninsula here would probably go up to give Riv just a little bit more capacity, okay? We wouldn't have it at a hundred percent, okay? We've got some capacity in South Mountain, so we could move this bar up a little bit, and this could go into south, and we would work with the busing and the things here to see how that would work. But this could go here, this could go here, it would give relief to Jones, and that would address those...
What was the reasoning behind keeping that sort of peninsula sticking down from Riv Mountain, just numbers?
Yeah. Understand, it goes all the way down here.
Right now, it goes all the way down along the river, which doesn't make much sense.
And these kids get busted regardless, correct? They would get busted to South Mountain, and they're getting busted to regular...
Within reason. There's a pretty large neighborhood over there. Contest to that, that's a walk in a neighborhood down that way.
Bob, what about that idea, that little western peninsula of 5B, Jones? What do you think the prognosis is on us being able to build on to Stettin to handle the overlap?
We probably wouldn't do it with a referendum. You think about, the referendum would just pass in the sense that it'd be null rate, and you just wouldn't do it with a referendum in the next few years. You could do it with fund balance, you did it already with fund balances.
On the other wing, yeah.
Two rooms, versus some wings.
Then you've got the other concern that if you do move that out of Jones, you just built on to Jones, making it a model school. You have capacity there that you want to fill up. Almost every, well, not almost, every scenario that we built is built around premise, Jones has room for one hundred and thirty-one more students. Stettin is over by fifty, so no matter what we build, and those are the two outliers, of all thirteen schools, those are the two outliers. So Stettin needs to get smaller, Jones needs to get bigger. Now, what you're saying about this peninsula moving into Riv, there's about exactly the amount of room in Riv for all of those students. It's about twenty-five kids, it's about twenty-three room in Riv right now.
And there's only about exactly that amount of room at Jones, too, for them, so...
Exactly.
We're at ninety-eight percent with Lincoln and 5B and ninety-seven percent of Jones, so we're, you know, going pretty close to winning if we build those the way we can.
At Jones, there's room for thirteen students. Plus, if you're adding, if you're taking them away, another twenty-five, you say? Yeah, so now you're at thirty-eight on there at Jones. The building you just built on, you have this A4, and it's a model school, you're going to have room for thirty-eight. That will be the biggest capacity we have.
Well, are we thinking ninety percent is what we consider to be our role or our goal, or are we thinking ninety-eight percent is?
We're already at ninety, right? We already made the assumption, so a one-hundred on here implies ninety. A ninety percent on here implies eighty-one. So it's ninety percent of ninety percent. So when you're seeing ninety-fives, it's not ninety-five percent full, it's ninety-five percent towards the flexibility factor that we already have built in of ninety, if that makes sense. The team actually joked about it towards ninety percent of ninety, it's ninety percent of one-hundred percent of ninety. Remember, ninety is that flexibility factor that we have built in.
So you're, so the, I didn't understand that when I first looked at this, I'm glad you pointed that out. So the ninety percent, or ninety-eight percent, for example, at, or ninety-seven percent at Jones, that isn't ninety percent capacity. That means that we're almost to ninety percent, we're right at that ninety percent-ish, which tells me that Riv Mountain and South Mountain still have a lot of space then with 5B.
Which was one of the reasons after the board developed...
Well, more space, I'll define it as more space than Jones.
You thought five minutes ago.
And more space than Jones. If we're moving kids from Jefferson down to Grant and moving some Grant kids to Lincoln, some Lincoln kids to Jones, you know, I think we're addressing...
Those students going to Riv would put Riv right at about a hundred. It would be our fullest school on the west side.
Unless we took off that peninsula sticking down.
And that's, like Ken said, the barometer. That was what was used... You said forty, about forty kids in that whole section left?
Right now, Stettin is fifty over.
Right in here.
And if we were through building, going to come in those kids and any future growth in Stettin, we're doing a substantial modicum.
Yeah, but if twenty-five kids move into Riv Mountain and forty-one move into South, you know, that puts South then a little bit higher than Riv Mountain. Riv Mountain still stays under, I guess.
From our discussions, you know, with Dave and looking at this even just through airflow reconnaissance and plans and so forth, you know, Riv seems to have, you know, there's some potential there that you could see some of that.
The number of people that I've heard from within the last two or three days isn't the sole thing that we should rely on. It doesn't mean that I, just because I haven't heard from somebody at a different spot, it doesn't matter, but I've heard from people in that spot. The concern of moving across the highway and going to Jones.
Oh, here? Okay. And that doesn't surprise me one bit. Not one bit.
Jeff, did you have anything else for move down?
No, you know, noting again that we moved Jefferson up, which I think was a good idea, to move some kids that could potentially walk to Jefferson that were being sent all the way up to Maine before. I think that works well. And I think the Grant, the sense of neighborhood of Grant works better than previous Grant. They don't crack. So I think we've accomplished some good things with 5B, but I think there are some tweaks we can make to it, and we'll have to see what the market will bear with regard to that western peninsula of Jones, to see where the board is and what options we can mark out on that situation. Because it is both 29 and 51 there, but those are important barriers, and the ideal is to keep kids from having to cross as many of those barriers as possible. So that's all I have.
I want to talk about the Franklin area. That has always bothered me, that we are busing kids that can see Franklin School. And that, this kind of takes care of it, but it was at eighty-one percent, so with some tweaking, it was seventy-eight, which I would like to see that lower also. But that school also has, I believe, free lunch and breakfast for all their students. So that would serve more of those kids that are at free and reduced meals anyway, but I just, I mean, there could be some tweaks made there, but I just think the idea of the neighborhood school is just right on and where we need to be at. That's all I have to say. Everybody's covered everything else.
Jeff, can you remind us, what's the cutoff for the free and reduced, to get the free lunches and the free breakfasts at school? Is it forty percent or...
Can you answer that, Bob?
Not definitively. So less than fifty?
We want to maximize it as much as we can. Get as many kids free lunches, free breakfasts.
The CEP schools weren't compromised, they're fine. The CEP schools that are already CEP also have bought the same, we're going to run up. And what Jamie says is accurate, those students in that neighborhood previously were not CEP school, CEP students. These students would become CEP students. In an area where I just told you a while ago, it's eighty-four percent free and reduced in that neighborhood. K-12, I didn't have the ability to segregate how many are K-5ers, but K-12, that's a high percentage, as you guessed before, somebody guessed that.
So they could be gaining those benefits.
Right. And then if you look at the Franklin boundary, the existing, the dark line, these students were getting the CEP free reduced, free lunch and breakfast, they no longer would, right?
Just, Gene, on your point, too, just to clarify, it does make sense to me that a little bit of that section that was formerly Riverview becomes Franklin, because like you said, it's right next to Franklin. That part makes sense to me. It's just the high number of free reduced at Franklin and then that one section that juts up into Riverview, that part I don't understand, as opposed to just having East Wausau all the way across as a border, a northern border for Franklin.
Now, taking that thought, okay, there was comments that said we should push Franklin more to the east. That came out of our last meeting. So we're going to add here, you know, are you suggesting that this all ripples up this direction? Because then we're going to lose something out here. Not that there's a lot of students out here, but I can't just keep adding.
No, but to go back to where I started, though, as I started at Marshall and said, you know, we're at Marshall at this ninety-eight percent, it seems we're moving some Hawthorne kids south into Marshall that we don't need to. And if we don't move those Hawthorne kids south into Marshall, then there's some Franklin kids that we don't need to move into Hawthorne to make up for that. And if we don't move those Franklin kids into Hawthorne to make up for that, then we don't need to move quite as many Riverview kids into Franklin. And if we don't do that, then we don't need to move quite as many Hewitt kids into Riverview, because, you know, it's a ripple, like you said. So I sort of started at the bottom.
You're thinking down in this area somewhere in the line, and then you're able to get some of this pushed up.
Right, and really, and it's, yeah, it's not even really pushed up, it's stay Riverview. I mean, they're already Riverview.
You're not talking about major changes here in terms, these are more tweaks than I would say overhauls, depending on the stretch of imagination, but the key is we would have to develop the tweak with Franklin first and then go from there.
Well, this isn't my decision, I'm not setting the streets. I'm just telling you what my first take was on it, looking at it over the last few days. So those were the concerns that I had, but...
And Ken, I did like what you did, moving Franklin and the Hawthorne boundaries to the east. I think that was really good, good and well done, because many of those streets just saw that Franklin are, if you took the trees out, they'd be in view of...
Bonnie, did you?
We have some schools that have areas that have a high transient population. It moves daily, having worked in this building and talked to principals and their administrative assistants, one school had two hundred moves in one month, in and out. It's constant, shift, shift, shift. So you're going to try, what you're trying to do is say, okay, we're trying to get these so we can even it out and keep as much, we know they're going to be moving. Lincoln has about eighty percent of its area is rental properties, which are up and down. And so, and I can remember people coming into the school and saying, I live, I can see Franklin School! I have to go somewhere else! And they were upset about that, because they really wanted a neighborhood school. And that's one of the things I liked about, that it's becoming more neighborhood, and I can see where that little East Wausau thing, because they're already in Riverview, probably wouldn't even know. So they're bust already, I'm sure, to Riverview. The area for GD Jones into Riv Mountain, we had almost five hundred kids in Riv Mountain when my kids were in Riv Mountain. So I mean, yeah, it was, and there was no South Mountain. So when South Mountain was built, that really dropped populations in both areas. But Riv Mountain and South Mountain, Maine, Riverview, Hewitt, Texas, those are pretty much bust areas, because you just have huge landmass and population that's limited. Students generally do not ride their bikes. I think my kids rode their bike to school five times, the three kids, and... in the five or six years they went there. Um, I can see bringing this down, because Highway R is right there, and you can avoid that fifty-one thirty-nine corridor. But um, I would like to see Stettin get the winged on. We can't do it now, and I know that. It's impossible if we have it ready to go. But that is a possibility for the future. And also South Mountain can put a wing on, or we can do some adjusting then for the modestory people, I think, too.
Good comments. You know, one thing that, uh, you know, Kathleen and I had this discussion too about, there's some positives here with, you know, South Mountain, Stettin having that ability to expand. It's just wins that, wins that.
Wins the ideal.
You know, and, and there's no doubt, when you look at the numbers, that there was pressure on Stettin. That just was not equitable, and we needed to get relief, and we know there's probably gonna be some growth potential. But I will tell then, I'm sure David would agree with me on this, you know, the level of growth that we anticipated seeing, you know, since the recession, just hasn't come back to the point where um many thought it would. And so you'll see growth out there. You may see some new houses go up or whatever, but you know, how many kids is that house gonna have? And while that's going on, you've got kind of reductions in the existing homes that are going on. Those families are getting smaller, so are you really gaining a lot of population in, in, in those areas? But the Stettin addition potential um does fit well with what we're trying to achieve here. It's just that we've got to pick a timeframe, a timeline, the best we've got to get on how to set that boundary, to, to, to give it some relief, but yet give it some ability to grow over the next, you know, five years, let's say, to when that addition might come forward, if it's needed.
Yes. Cause we don't know.
Yeah.
My neighborhood, we're all retired. Rib Mountain used to, in my neighborhood, we used to have fifty kids.
What the planners are telling me is there's far more potential to see growth on the west side of the river than there is on the east side. So if we're gonna favor reserve capacity in schools and build it in, it's gonna be on the west side. Now, the apartment complex may be excluded, because that is a trend that we're beginning to see taking more and more traction, especially in urban centers, okay? People like to be there now. And, and that doesn't mean that it's just for baby boomers retiring or millennials that are unmarried. I mean, there are a lot of single parent families that may be looking for that kind of environment. So we've gotta reserve some capacity there, too.
Man?
Phil, I, I agree with that. He's looking at, you know, this little area and Lance, I think, I mean, your thoughts on, on Marshall getting so big is right on it. I mean, it's one of our older schools. We hear, you know, some facility complaints there, especially on the hot days, packing in with more students, I think. Yeah, that, that concerns me a little bit. On option five A, we've got results for the whole of, you know, fifteen uh, twenty-eight percent can't live with it, you know, the rest, you know, either supports it or, or can live with it. Did you do that poll for 5B? And where did that fall? Where, where did those numbers fall?
That's the one we just got today.
We just got it today. That's why it's not in board.
I believe the I support was fifteen, the I can live with was five, and the I can't support was five, aren't you?
Yeah, so that was total number of votes, so it would look like twenty percent red, twenty percent orange, and then sixty percent would be the blue on the 5B.
So it actually kinda got a little work for five A.
One, one vote.
Yeah.
And what is the total number of students that are impacted by 5B? So how many, how many kids total have to move one way or another? If we did this next year.
If you can put one of the pictures up there, maybe we can get a gauge of it. I'm not gonna get a total.
It'd be nice, I guess that would be.
But this, this stretch in here.
Yeah.
Of K-5 kids, it's about thirty-five students. This one in here is about twenty-five.
Hang on, Bob. I think we've got a map here in the hole.
Great. Hey, thirty-five, twenty-three. I wasn't too far off. Why am I glad of that?
I'm there for you.
This is a great visual.
I'm glad you guys helped.
Could we get that sent around to the board later, too, that map?
It was just created.
Okay.
I mean, in anticipation of that question.
Ken, can you explain what those numbers are and what the boundaries are for those numbers?
Um, the thirty-three then um would be this area from this road down to this section. Okay? So thirty-nine would be this particular area here.
No, sorry to interrupt, Ken, give you a chance to catch your breath. Remember, the bold lines are the old borders.
Right.
So this is an old border for the northern border of Jefferson. These students would have been going to Maine and now going to Jefferson. These students would have been going to Stettin, now are going to Maine. So you get the idea that this used to be Stettin, I believe. Now it's Rib. This used to be Jones, now it's Rib.
So thanks for the question.
This used to be Hawthorne.
Yeah, if you could, if you could send that to.
Any other questions, man? Before I um sort of come to some kind of conclusion, um, I said I'd go back around. So does anybody have anything else um that they want to discuss or ask yet tonight before I move on this? Everybody, okay. Um, I'm gathering that no one is in the position to make a move to recommend 5B to the um board on Thursday, but I'll just ask in case anybody is wanting to make that, that specific um proposal is recommended. Okay, that doesn't mean that the issue is done or that we're done discussing it though, because we're having the meeting on Thursday. Um, we've got other agenda items and we need to keep discussing this. So um, what I will do then is I will move that the boundary agenda item, um, move to the special meeting on Thursday for further discussion and possible action. And would hope that in the meantime, there'll be um a bit of some crunch time and probably some additional information coming back to us with no promises that there'll be final action on Thursday, but we will be noticed for possible action on Thursday. So that is my motion as a first, and I would seek a second.
Second.
Anybody have any concerns with, questions with that?
No, I, I, looking at this though, you know, if we're talking about what Lance suggested, you know, just trying to minimize the, the impact. Here, it certainly would be nice to look at some of these pockets on the east side for uh, for River View.
Well, let's say we.
It, 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 see if we can help that, help, help reduce the number of impacted families as well as kind of support what you were talking about.
That's kinda what I was getting at, is how many kids we had to move because of one issue, and maybe we can lessen that. And so it would be nice if any other options are brought back to us, that we have something like this to show the difference of either more or less students affected by the change.
What you'd be looking at, uh, what you're requesting, and correct me if I'm wrong, having done this, I'm a very big advocate that anytime there's a change, the tweak, even if it's a tweak, it's free number. So what you'd be looking at on Thursday is a 5C, okay?
You'd be lucky if we stop at 5C.
And now, we're gonna do 5C. What we'll do is, once that's, and I'll work with the administrative team on questions, but we'll try to come up with a revision to that, this map too, so you can continually see the impact.
Because I think you've heard some of the things that we like and some of the things that we're concerned with, and um, I don't know that we'll hit the mark on Thursday, but um, maybe we can get closer to what we're all in favor of. Um, so we have a first and a second. Any other questions on this one before we move on to the other agenda items? Okay. So all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. So that will move then to the special meeting on Thursday for further discussion and possible action. Which brings us then to did we have a committee member that had?
I just wanna know if the meeting on Thursday is still gonna have public?
Oh.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Yep, the meeting on Thursday, um, the way we, I think I saw a draft of the agenda item, we have a few business matters to take care of first.
Wait, that's not changed.
Yeah, and then we'd have the public discussion before we address this. Yep.
If I can just.
Yes.
The entire purpose for the meeting on Thursday was to give people an opportunity after the board heard the, the recommendation, responded to it, to be able to get up to speed, have some time to think through impact questions they might have, so that they can be responsive to the board. That was a main focus of that meeting.
It's one of the reasons we don't take final action at, even though this is a committee of the whole, we don't take final action at committee meetings. We don't have public comment at committee meetings. It gives us a chance to think about it before we have that meeting, so that'll definitely take place. Okay, so that takes us then to the um charter renewals. And Dr. Schwei, are you?
It's my pleasure to ask Jackson Smith to come forward. Uh, Jackson is the EGL Governance Council Chairperson, and supporting him tonight will be Chris Vanenhebel and um Tim Fettig as well. The EGL Governance Council and Tim Fettig, the teachers, the parents, and even the students at EGL have been in a, engaged in a couple of year process in um revising and, and working on a charter renewal. And uh, Jackson is going to lead the presentation of the recommendations for that renewal, a little bit of history about EGL. And um, we'll begin with that in just a moment.
Right, thank you, Mike. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight to all of you. Yeah, my name is Jackson Smith. I'm the Engineering at Wassa, Engineering and Global Leadership Governance Council Chair. As most of you know, our charter renewal is, our charter is up for renewal this year, so we thought this would be an appropriate time to come forward and tell you a little bit about the school, the progress that we've made, so the agenda tonight, and, and really the goal is to impress and find you the success that we've had at Wassa EGL and what place it has here in the Wassa School District. So I'll do a real brief history on how the school, uh, how the school began, and then we'll get to where we're at today. What makes us unique compared to other high schools in the Wassa School District and the area. And then the last portion will be on areas that we see some future development opportunities for the school. So a real brief history, in two thousand eight, uh, the Wassa School District brought together community and business leaders. And the goal of that meeting was to come up with an idea or a unique STEM charter school that would provide an option for the students in the Wassa School District and the surrounding districts to come, to come to Wassa. So that was kicked off with a planning team that was made up of veteran teachers from the Wassa School District. And they had the opportunity to travel around the country and view other STEM-focused or other charter schools that did similar activities. The neat thing about that was, they went to all these different schools and didn't find any of those that really fit the bill for exactly what they wanted. But what they did do was took a lot of really great ideas and rolled the ball into one, and that's what, that's what we know as Wassa EGL today. So it was about a two-year process. In two thousand ten, the school opened its doors and they had thirty-six high school students that first year. Uh, gotta give a lot of credit to the staff then and now for being flexible and innovative that first year. Definitely had its challenges, but they've come a long way and um really have made it a great environment for those students. So the current state of EGL, our current enrollment at the school is seventy-six students. And this fluctuates depending on the time of year, but anywhere from the mid-seventies up to the mid-eighties is typical enrollment for us. Roughly twenty-five percent of that enrollment is what we'll call it new to district. So either out of district kids, parochial schools, or homeschool students. Throughout the last five years, ten different school districts in the area have been represented at EGL. So that isn't necessarily the composition today, but throughout the history. Couple measures of success here. Our composite ACT score at E, at EGL is a twenty-three point six compared to the state average. So one metric, one indicator of the performance these, these students are doing. We also have a hundred percent placement in the post-secondary school of choice for these students. Now, I wanna highlight here that this isn't necessarily the main focus for EGL. We're not just a school to send kids to college. That's the kids that we've attracted and graduated so far. We reopened up any, any path after high school. We're very proud to say that we were ranked the thirty-fourth best high school by Newsweek Magazine in two thousand fourteen and number one in Wisconsin. But a wonderful marketing opportunity for the Wassa School District to have Wassa EGL within its boundaries. We recently finished off phase two of our fab lab, so this was an undertaking that the Governance Council spearheaded and with the help of Tim Fettig, and we were able to bring in nearly a hundred thousand dollars of community and um business donations to help fill out our fab lab with equipment. This is kind of, this is really a cornerstone for the educational piece. And a few of the different components that we have in there, an example would be our three D modelers. And so these, these students can go in, they can design a product, hit print on it, and four hours later or a day later, they have a tangible product that they can work with, test, make modifications to. So very happy to see the community support behind that. And we would estimate that we're getting somewhere between, somewhere around thirteen thousand six hundred student hours on that in a given year. So these students are always in there, they're always running the machines. We get a lot of traction with that. We've also had a number of different schools in Wisconsin come visit Wassa EGL and are now modeling their, their curriculum delivery methods after what we do here. So what makes us unique compared to other traditional high schools? Uh, we really feel that we have three pillars of curriculum delivery that makes us different. The first one is interdisciplinary teacher-led seminars. So this is more your typical classroom-type work. Teacher-led, teacher-led seminars, obviously. We combine that with a student-led project, so throughout their entire high school career, the students at various stages have projects that they own, project manage, develop, and then present out. And then we combine that with an online learning piece. So those are really the three pillars that make us different. And all of these really pull into a very personalized learning opportunities for these students. They really give a, a choice in what they wanna learn about and how they wanna learn that still meets all the Wisconsin standards. So we got to cut off at the top, but so the first example here is your interdisciplinary teacher-led seminars. And I'll do the slide a little backwards. We'll actually start with the bottom. But to give you an example of one of these courses is a course called Entrepreneurial Manufacturing. So within this course, there's point three technology credits, there's point two U.S. history credits. And the students learn about great entrepreneurs through U.S. history. Part of this course is that they have to create and make their own tangible product. They have to write a business plan around it, and then they have to present that to their peers and sometimes to community members as well. So what's neat about this is, I really wanna highlight the interdisciplinary portion of this. So rolling multiple credits within the same course and within the same teaching hour really drives a lot of efficiency within the classroom. And that efficiency gives us a lot of additional time for these students to spend with teachers around their own personal projects. They have multiple options to choose from, so these change over about every two months. And there's two to three options for the students to choose from, depending on their interest. And one kind of, one side benefit of this that we've learned is that most of these are team taught. So you have multiple teachers in the classroom, teaching on the same course. And really an opportunity for growth for our teachers. I think it really makes for a collaborative environment where they make the educational experience better by building off of each other. I don't know that we anticipated that going into it. Has been a really nice side benefit, though. We get into the student-led projects, and so these are projects that these students pick. They own it, they project manage it, and then they report out on it. And depending on their level of grade, really dictates how big of a project it is. Start with fairly simple ones at the freshman level, and for the seniors, they do a two-hundred-hour capstone project. So this is a pretty serious and involved project. Owning their own project really helps to drive depth in the knowledge. They have a lot of interest in what they're learning about. They learn project management skills, they learn time management skills. As you can imagine, doing a two-hundred-hour capstone project is not something you start to week before. So there's a lot of planning that goes into that. And at the end of the year, we have our project showcase. So if any of you have not attended the project showcase, I would strongly recommend you do so, typically in May, and we can get you the exact date. But this is the time that all the students um report out on the projects that they've been working on. I've had the privilege for the last three years to go in and help to critique and grade those different projects for the seniors. I can tell you, I'm a four-year degreed engineer, mechanical engineering degree. Some of the projects coming out of these kids would rival a four-year engineering program. It's pretty astounding when you see what they're doing. We also couple that with the online learning piece. So this is an opportunity for the kids to learn to use technology. It gets um learning opportunities outside the walls of the school. So we have a couple of different areas that we use in that, but this helps to complement and round out the other two facets of, of learning. These all tie into personalized learning for these students. It's really a collaborative effort between the teacher and student. As we talked about driving efficiency before with those interdisciplinary seminars, that gives more time for these kids to spend with the same teachers and make that bond. And it's a very collaborative effort to get these projects through and done. So a lot of what they do is short and long-term goals, um, future focus, looking ahead to what they need to be doing today to get this project or get this um report done. And as I said before, these students really have a voice and a choice in what they're learning and how they're learning it. I would say that that student-teacher relationship is probably one of the greatest successes at Wassa EGL. relationship is probably one of the greatest successes at Wassa EGL. We also have very rigorous standards, so we require twenty-six credits to graduate, and some of those projects that they do throughout their high school career, a service learning project at the junior level, so this is a ninety-hour project that has to be community-based to benefit the community. Every student goes through a senior internship. We've coupled with a number of businesses throughout the community that take these students in, give them a ninety-hour internship, and really show them what it's like to be in the real working world. And the kids also get an opportunity to pick which internship they want. And then lastly, the senior capstone project, which is a two-hundred-hour final project with presentation to their peers and also to the community. So there's some continued development opportunities. It's amazing what's been happening in the last five years to go from a concept to what Wassa EGL is today, but we fully recognize that we think in the next five years we can make it better. So the first one is community partnerships. We have a pretty broad portfolio of businesses that we work with already, but we think we can do better. We think we can reach out to more businesses and get those students more experiences or more varied experiences. And the second piece of that is the global leadership component. Although we feel like we've done a very good job with this, we think it can be even better. And right now, we have the right people on the right seats on the bus. In the last year, we've made more progress on this front than we did the previous four years before that. And one piece of that is our foreign language courses, and so we're working on what's the best way to deliver that curriculum to the students. The neat thing about EGL is that we're nimble, we're flexible, we can change depending on what we think is the best method for doing And lastly, what's the future, what is the future of Wassa EGL? As I stated, our charter is coming up for renewal. We're seeking a five-year renewal on that. We really feel like we can be a living model for education in the Wassa School District. We can try new things, we're, as I said, we're flexible, we're nimble. We can get into those things that might benefit the rest of the district as well. As council, we feel that to maximize that student-teacher relationship, that the maximum enrollment will cap at about a hundred to a hundred and twenty students. This is not a four, five, six-hundred student high school. We like having it small, and we feel like that has a real benefit to the students going there. And the last piece that I'll touch on here is that we provide an educational choice for these students and students in the surrounding communities. Wassa EGL does not fit every student in the Wassa School District, but I'll say that the kids that go there, I would contend that this school gives them more educational opportunities and provides more depth of knowledge than they may have gotten in other high schools as well, so it fits them very well. Are there any questions?
Does the administration have anything to add in terms of presentation first?
I'll echo a couple of things that the personalized learning, the combination of personalized learning, student ownership of their learning with the teacher as a facilitator more so than a direct teach on the font of knowledge. Our kids are learning through the engagement of teachers as facilitators with our students, and then probably the most pivotal, the key point about EGL is the authenticity with which students are engaged. They're engaged in authentic projects, products, performances that Jackson gave testament to when he said a four-year institution student would be challenged to produce the same kinds of things our students are producing. EGL in many ways is the direction of education in all of our secondary schools. A move more toward teacher as facilitator, a move more toward personalized learning, a move more toward authenticity.
Could you explain, anyone, some of this stuff we could do anyway? We could have curriculum at Wassa East and do some of it anyway. Could you touch on some of the benefits that the charter school presents, some of the things we can do as a charter that we couldn't do if we just made this as an option for a student at Wassa East?
In a traditional school, we're very bound by minutes, seat time, if you will. In a charter school, they have much more flexibility with how they use their minutes, and I think they brought to the surface here a very salient point, which is in a single classroom setting, a single project or product, we can be meeting the standards for U.S. History as well as, what was the example?
Social studies as well.
Technology.
Technology.
In our traditional secondary schools, we have a student experiencing U.S. History in one classroom, moving to another classroom where they experience English Language Arts. They're folding in several content areas simultaneously within given projects, so they have that kind of flexibility as well, meeting multiple standards within a single classroom.
That example right there of doing the entrepreneurs in U.S. History, that's in addition to the other history lessons that they're giving?
They're studying technical U.S. History, where they're doing economics and politics and social order and all those things. So this is something in addition to the normal U.S. History that they're all also doing.
They do get a explicit U.S. History class through which they're studying the common themes and coursework, standards of history, and they fold all of these together, so the entrepreneurial study will, they will look for opportunities to bring in some of the history standards that the standalone history class then doesn't need to address, similarly with the English Language Arts. Almost every project has with it a, whether it's a business plan for the nonfiction typewriting, if it's, no matter the project or performance that they have, there is a written portion that students have which meet many of the Language Arts needs or standards.
Is there a reason five years rather than one year, or three years, or ten years, or just some other number?
There is a new direction. We are, in the past, our charter schools have, it has been recommended that we use national standards for charter schools, and the state of Wisconsin in recent legislation has suggested that, not suggested, they have required that charter schools now must follow those standards. One of the expectations in those standards is that charters will be renewed for periods of five years.
Sure.
Will your freshmen be required to take the civics test and have it pass by the end of their senior year like everyone else in the state?
I'm going to defer that question to the education team back there.
We're actually going to start with this year's seniors.
Good job.
As a pilot for the test and our social studies teacher that has developed.
Because I think it's the freshman class, Tim, that's the one that's required to?
Well, they're required to get it before they graduate.
Before they graduate, right.
Next year's juniors, I believe.
Next year's juniors have to do that, so you're getting a head start. That's what most of the schools are doing. And are your teachers certified by the state of Wisconsin or is just anybody pop in?
It is, you'll notice in the charter, to both of your questions, this charter frames that EGL will satisfy all the same assessment expectations that the state expects of every traditional school, and the second part of that is that this charter lays out the expectation that every teacher at EGL will be licensed.
Okay, but they still can go out and do their internships and this, above and beyond what they're doing in the classroom.
Yes.
Is there anything changed from this contract this year compared to the one that we are operating under?
Not substantive.
You, one of the odd things I saw flipping back and forth between the two contracts is the transportation issue. The EEA provides transportation from the original student, student's original school. EGL does not consider something all responsible for transportation. Why do we have two different models?
That predates me.
I can speak that when we developed our contract, we followed the transportation guidelines that were in place for charter schools at that time, and to establish a charter school when we did, one of the criteria is that we had to abide by is that we couldn't provide additional transportation or separate transportation for students to get there. With that being said, most of the students that come to us from within our district are able to get to our school with Wassa School District transportation.
There's differing incentives between the student populations at EGL versus EEA and who is willing to go to which one.
It is, our responsibilities are similar. It is also the district's prerogative to provide that transportation. It's, the charter can't demand it, but the district can at times provide it, and that was what was decided.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then I will seek a motion to recommend to the full Board of Education the approval of the five-year charter school renewal contract for Wassa EGL Academy as presented.
So moved.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries, so that will go to full board. And then next, we have, thank you, thank you for coming and waiting. Now you know all kinds of things about our boundaries, so.
There'll be more than one.
Okay, so that will move us then to the EEA contract, and I think, Tom, you're presenting on that one?
Yes, actually, Dr. Young will be presenting, but I'm going to introduce Dr. Young. EEA is seeking a five-year charter renewal as well, and, you know, I think one of the things that you will see with EGL and now with the EEA, both of these charter schools provide opportunities, opportunities for our students who may not fit best in a traditional classroom or who may have other interests that lead them to look outside. And so one of the things that we've noticed, and I know that Dr. Young will present tonight, is how their method of education has changed over the years and how they continually try to be flexible to meet all needs of the students that are part of their school. So, Dr. Young.
Thank you. Tough act to follow, EGL, obviously. Both of us being charter schools and being closely connected by proximity, you will find there are definitely some similarities between the two, between the two schools. As I culled through data and was beginning to put together a presentation for today, as part of that process, I decided to send an email out to our student body, just saying, I'm taking our contract, our governance board, a couple of our governance board members are here, chair is here this evening, and I said, we're taking our contract renewal before the board, before the school board. Is there anything that I should tell them, anything I should say? And the responses completely changed the direction of what I brought before you tonight. Obviously, very heavy on relationships, but I got several responses that literally, a quote was in there, that the school saved my life. We are another unique environment. We serve students in grade six through twelve. When we originally chartered, and it's been eleven years, it started as New Horizons Charter School, then we had two charters at the same time, and then as we were all under one roof, we became all under one roof at East, we went to one charter. Throughout that time span, things half shifted a bit. When we began, the purpose was for students who are at risk of failing in the traditional school setting. And for a time, we've had to kind of, we had to battle the reputation a little bit of the fact that at risk of failing in the traditional setting means many things. At risk, people tended to chop off the of failing in the traditional setting. And what we've learned more and more over time is that we have students who are being, you know, they may encounter bullying in the larger school settings. We have students with significant mental health issues in our district who might suffer from anxiety disorders. With our two large high schools in the district being over one thousand students, if you're an individual who does not dwell in large crowds, I, for one, am very grateful that we are part of a district that offers not only one, but two different options for our high school students to be able to be in a smaller learning environment throughout their high school career. So again, that really shifted the direction of my presentation. I'll give you all the data when I come back before you again in May to do our presentation of our learning objectives and how everything is going. I did email this out to you, and this was my first go at this particular infographic off of the site, and I was going to have this beautiful handout for each of you, but you get to the end, it's free as you start using the site, and then, you know, they want fifty dollars for you to print it at the end, so I thought, I'll just put it up on the screen and email it to you. Yes, and Bob is happy with me.
He's probably.
You can see it right off of here. A core for us is relationships, and trust is the key to those relationships. The small school size, the dedicated staff, the extensive time that we get with students. There's a lot of research about looping, and looping means you remain with the same students for repeated years. Sometimes we have students that graduate, and we've had, we've had them for seven years. Now, in some respects, this is always the time of the year when we have to give a lot of pep talks to our seniors and remind them that they're ready, because sometimes this is a tough time of year for them because they start to realize that, wait a minute, this environment that they've been part of for seven years, six years, five years, things are going to change. So we just have to remind them that we're still going to be right where we are, and we get quite a few who come back with questions, you know, how do I fill out, like, would you read this essay before I submit it for college, those kinds of things. But that extensive time with the students is really critical for us. Our parent involvement, we had parent-teacher conferences last Thursday, and with eighty students in our school, we conferenced with all but four parents, all but four of those students' parents, which was pretty significant. We are definitely a school family. I was approached last week by one of my juniors, a girl who has overcome some significant challenges in her life, coming from a home of addiction, not always making some of the best choices herself. She is now doing very, very well, ahead in credits. Just a real model in our school, she came to me, this is what I have going on, so-and-so, I found out that so-and-so's picking on one of the middle schoolers. I would like to talk to this person and this person, if that's okay with you. She had the direction of what to do and followed through, and by that evening when I got home and opened up my computer, I had an email with it, from her, with all the follow-up of who she had talked to and what, you know, what she had gotten to the bottom of. And that's not, we follow a lot of restorative practices in our school, which means we try to put as many things into the student hands as we can. Obviously, there are pieces that we don't have students do, but when we have a student wanting to make their school community better, we definitely try to make sure that they get the opportunity to do that. When we look at rigor, data, data, and more data. We are incredible data geeks. As I said, I will bore you with some of that, hopefully not bore you with some of that in May, but we also, similar to EGL, operate with a very individualized curriculum. It is a blended model as well. We utilize primarily the computer-based curriculum, which allows the students to move through their core subjects. Those classes are aligned to all of the standards and benchmarks that students need to meet, but they can move through it at their own pace, and they can get help when and where they need it. So instead of, you know, a presentation to a class as a whole, they move through things. When they get stuck, then they go to an adult, and then they get one-on-one help to get them through the point that they're, so that they fully understand the material. As a team, we are never done getting better. It is continual. Just when there's one thing that we think, okay, all right, you know, that, we're definitely headed in the right direction, it never stops. It's, okay, what's next? What has to be next? And so our curriculum has morphed over time from that computer-based and the one-on-one interaction with teachers to, we offer, we are running intervention classes pretty much all day long based on response to intervention, what our students' needs are. So students with a low reading level, students with needing a little bit of extra help in math, or in some cases, students who we know just can't do the computer-based for, you know, the majority of their coursework. So we do teacher-led U.S. History, teacher-led World History. We chose the social studies areas at this point for our interventions for reading because up until the change in credits, that was the subject students needed the most credits in English and social studies. Now we're looking at morphing that once again and doing an alternating system with science and social studies so that students are getting those interventions through different curriculum, you know, one year versus the other. Although, in true fashion of continuing to revise and revamp and figure out what's best for the kids, we're embarking on twelve days of training with the district's reading specialist, Amy MacGovern, and we know full well that out of that training, how we offer our interventions may very well be very different than what it looks like right now. So we're going to train, and then we're going to figure out what we need to do that's best for kids. We do have a mastery model requirement, so our students have to do eighty percent We do have a mastery model requirement, so our students have to do 80% on all their activities before they can move on. We have a lot of students who never handed in homework. We have kids who could get by with, you know, if you don't hand something in, eventually it turns into a zero. And the difference for us here is when they complete a half-credit in a class, they literally have done every single assignment in that class and done it at 80% or better before they're allowed to move on. Now, sometimes do we have to urge them to, to get moving? And we have some of those items, yes, we most certainly do. But we're finding that it's definitely, over time, the kids develop so much better of a sense of confidence about their skills and about the fact that they really are learners. We also have a pretty significant community involvement in learning. We have a longstanding partnership with the Wisconsin Institute of Public Policy and Service. We've done a lot of work with them on deliberation, which is a decision-making model. We have hosted community deliberations through them at the Center for Civic Engagement and, and have partnered with some other agencies as well. We believe in wrapping as many positive adults around our, our kids as we possibly can. The results that we're seeing, we've had 68 graduates in seven years. That's ranging from the first year that we graduated a student, where we only have one. We have an increasing number of early grads. This year in particular, I believe right now, we have four students who are looking at graduating at the end of their junior year. Some of the other students are opting to stay on and add a few more classes to their transcript and also participate in youth options. So we definitely are pushing more in that direction, and our students are thinking more and more about post-secondary options, which is big for us, because while we have some who are already headed in that direction, we have a lot who, we have kids who are first-generation high school grads. We have kids who are first-generation college students. So it's a bit daunting for them, and it's daunting for some of their parents to go through that whole process, never having been through it before. We are a high-poverty school. We are the only secondary Title I school in the district. So our, our numbers for free and reduced lunch tend to be in the upper 70s. They've been running that way for several years now. But that certainly doesn't stop our students. What it definitely does for our staff is reminds us that we know what the data is on kids who grow up in poverty. And we know what some of that data suggests about their chance to eventually not be living in poverty. So we feel very, very strongly that it is our job to make sure they get the best education possible so that hopefully they won't be carrying on generational poverty. And so it's because of that that we are very grateful to the board for having supported this kind of option for 11 years. And we would seek that you also renew EEA's contract for another five years. Happy to take any questions?
Sure, anything to add to that, Tom?
Just that, you know, the, as I've been able to work with the, the Governance Council and with the staff at EEA, the Governance Council is made up of parents, community members, and people who truly are invested in providing opportunities for students. And over the past probably six months, they've taken a look at the charter contract and spent significant time cleaning up those areas that were outdated, looking at things that needed to be changed. But it was good for them to go back in and really immerse themselves in the reason that EEA exists. And so we thank them for all of their work and support as well.
Any questions?
I have been going to your graduations. I guess the first graduation I attended, there were two students, so it must have been the second year. And I was invited actually by one of the students, and that's why I came, because I knew his mom and I knew him. And it's unbelievable how proud these parents are of these kids. And their siblings are so excited to see that they graduated. Because you're right, they might be the first person to graduate from high school. And that, you know, one of them was excited about going on to college, you know, and it was just, the excitement there about learning was just, thank you for doing that.
It's a privilege to be there and be able to do it.
My only concern with the school is it's so popular and works so well, but sometimes we don't have enough room for all the students that could use it. I don't know if there's a solution to that problem, but it's a good one. It's a good problem to have, yes.
And you are right, over the last couple of years, we have maintained a waiting list, which is not something, you know, prior to, probably three years ago, we didn't necessarily have that waiting list. I know we were approached before, just to say when, when we were looking at the referendum within the district and things like that, did we have any plans to grow? And our answer was, we don't, we don't seek to grow the school. We are here to help meet a need within the district. And so if we are ever called upon to try to find solutions to that issue, we definitely are, are willing to, to look at that. I can say the waiting list does have some ebb and flow. Fortunately, there might be students who are on the list for a little while. You know, typically, we, we end up with a little bit of flux, which allows us to bring them in, which is a good thing because we have a very hard time saying no. So if that didn't happen, we probably already would have approached, approached our board a couple of times. We, we went to 82 here and there, you know, just because maybe there was an extenuating circumstance or a student who was on our roster but maybe participating mostly in youth options. And so we, we are very much bound by the space of the 80 students in the, in the area that we have, but always are seeking to maximize it as, as fast as we can.
Shannen, given the space you have, that there really isn't a way to extend?
No, not, not in the.
In the same way.
Not in the same way. And I also, you know, EGL touched on it in their presentation, there's definitely something to the numbers that you have in maintaining a certain community. You know, so I think that there are, that's always something to consider when we look at, when we look at the charter schools as, as those smaller learning centers for students is how do we make sure we don't grow out of what, what creates a safe size of learning community as well?
Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, then I seek a motion to recommend to the full Board of Education the approval of the five-year charter school contract renewal for EEA Learning Academy as presented.
So move second.
First and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we already hit each of the last agenda items, so then I will seek a motion to adjourn.
So move second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? We are adjourned.